Good evening. And welcome to the Board of Trustees. A regular meeting for February twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, before we get started, I would like to motion to end the work session.
So moved.
Second.
Nora's seconding. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Since we have the ayes have it. Uh, thank you. Uh, please join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Uh, first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Someone like to make a motion?
Mayor, you need to open the meeting, please.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Hold on. I had a view this before.
What are we doing?
I had him turn the volume on.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
It might be me. It's not me.
Sound check?
We're good. Whatever you did. All right. I'd like a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Augustino. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Uh, okay. The next item on the agenda?
You need to open the meeting, sir.
Oh geez, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm sorry, my mistake. I got ahead of myself. I need a motion to open this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Take one.
Happy you.
All right, all right. Sorry about that. Uh, the next item on the agenda are presentations. And the first presentation I have to do tonight. Hopefully you girls see this lovely presentation, and it's to one of our employees, uh, Andre Powell. And I'm gonna read it. Whereas the village of Mamarone, since its establishment in November sixteenth, eighteen ninety-five, has been blessed leaders who have dedicated themselves to improving and advancing the betterment of all. And whereas, while many of these leaders are well-known, many others serve in less obvious but equally important ways to enhance the quality of life in our friendly village. And whereas, one of these individuals is Andre Powell, who answered the call of service to the Mamarone community as an employee of the village five years ago, originally hired as a labor and a park department, and now employed as an employee of the sanitation department. And whereas Andre Powell is a member of the Powell family, who have given so much to the residents of the village through their generational service within a straight gay church, a ministry in which both his grandfather and uncle have served as spiritual leaders. And whereas Andre Powell is the latest exemplar of this family commitment, having recently gone above and beyond the call of action risking his personal safety by preventing a young child from being hit by a vehicle on Beach Avenue. Therefore, I, Mayor Thomas A. Murphy, on behalf of the residents of the village of Mamarone, hereby express a deep gratitude to Andre Powell and convey to him the esteem by which he is he- held by his fellow employees and thank him for his selfless action. Mr. Powell, thank you very much. Uh, I know you and I run into each other, uh, on a, on a weekend morning when you're out, uh, doing your job and I'm out enjoying a bagel. You, you, you are an energetic hard worker who always has a smile on his face and a kind word for everybody. What you did for this child, uh, you know, is, is, is an example of the great employees that we have in this community. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart and as I'm sure the parents of, of that child do.
Yes.
We have a lovely plaque here for you. Sally will have it for you whenever you're ready. And if you'd like to say a couple of words, that'd be fine.
No, just thank you so much and I'm glad I was there to help and, um, Dave's a good kid.
Thank you, my friend.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work, Derek. Thank you. And we'll have this for you and, and a little something extra in the envelope, I heard.
That season's over. That season's over already.
Thank you, buddy.
All right. Everybody have a great night.
Have a good night. Bye, Andre.
All right.
Okay, and the next item on our agenda is a presentation from our fire department. And we have another employee, but also a fire chief, Chief Barney here. Hello, chief.
Hello, how are you? How's everybody doing tonight?
Good, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm hoping that you all have the slideshow that I had sent, uh, had asked Sally to send out on Friday afternoon. All right, um, so, um, at the council meeting last week, uh, we, as a company, Columbia Engine Hoes requested the fire department to allow us to, um, start building what will be the next replacement fire engine. Um, and we selected a company, which will be the same company that, um, that Mamero, the current engine forty that's due to arrive in the next several weeks, um, Seagrave. So the council approved us to start the process of building, which as you know, as a board now is a long and, long and drawn-out process from, you know, uh, starting to find it and, you know, piece together what you need and what you don't need and, and weed through the whole, the whole build process. So, um, uh, Mr. Barbario asked me to put together this presentation, just a quick four slideshow, um, to explain what we're planning on doing. Um, just so you have an idea, you know, we're not, we're not trying to, uh, you know, spend a substantial amount of money in the next six, six weeks. You know, this is, as you know, it takes a long time for this to happen. So we wanted to start with this. Um, at first, we're just, the, the first, the second slide is, um, as you see, it's just a list of the committee members. Um, as you can tell, it's, it's a pretty substantial group of people that are in our company. Mostly past chiefs and, uh, three captains that are currently our most active drivers.
Chief, I'm sorry, I, I, I just forgot. Which, which house is this for again?
This is Columbia on Barry Avenue, Barry Jefferson Avenue.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I, I just.
You're welcome. That's okay. Yeah, that was on the first slide, but actually we, we kind of scrolled past it, but, um, if we go to, um, that's just the list of the committee members. We go to the third slide, um, just some basic information. Um, there's a NFPA, which is the standards of all firefighting suggests that an apparatus at over twenty years old be removed from frontline service. Um, as of today's date, our current engine forty-one is now twenty-five years old. Um, we, we have, uh, five hun- five thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine engine hours on the, on the motor. Now, while we don't drive it around town, that, you know, we're not, we're not constantly putting miles on it like a sanitation truck or a salt truck. Um, but the just engine idling miles, uh, engine idling equivalates to more miles. So the amount of hours on that net, on that vehicle are equivalent of three hundred, over three hundred and thirty thousand miles on that truck. Um, and on average, this, this piece of apparatus is going to five hundred alarms a year. So it's a very active piece of equipment. It's one of the first new apparatus to thruway, uh, should there be an accident. It, it houses, uh, one of our jaws of life, um, tools. So it is a very active piece of equipment.
Chief, how do you gauge engine hours?
So, uh, the Department of Transportation has equivalent to, um, one engine hour is equivalent to, to putting sixty miles on the vehicle.
I understand, I understand that, chief, but how, how do you measure?
So the, the veh- the vehicle actually has a gauge, just like a mileage gauge.
Gotcha.
And any, um, any diesel, uh, piece of equipment also has a engine hour meter on it.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Yeah, because, because diesel, diesel trucks on average can go to three hundred thousand miles. You know, a diesel pickup truck can last a very long time. But a lot of these larger pieces of equipment aren't doing road miles, but they're running for long and long periods of time where they're still getting beat up, just as if they were driving over the road.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We can go to the, uh, next slide. So in two thousand and eleven, there was a presentation given, uh, when we needed to replace one of our ladders. Um, and it, it, it coincides with that every twenty years, that something should no longer be a frontline piece of apparatus. Um, we purchased one of the ladder trucks in two thousand and ten. This was a presentation that was given. Um, so if you see, if you go to the actual next slide and we can, we can kind of go back between the two of these, you will see that this is where we're currently at in two thousand and twenty-one. So if you, if you lose the engine forty from the middle, engine forty-one would be the next pumper to be replaced in that twenty, that, uh, twenty-year span. Um, since that ladder was purchased in two thousand and ten, the every-five-year thing, for the most part, has been, has been being followed and we are setting ourselves up for success. Um, the problem that we're having now is just like with everything else, lead-out time on deliveries are now up almost to two years. So if we delay the process of ordering the equipment, we won't see it for several years to come. And that would now, if, if we don't, if we don't move forward with the next piece of equipment in, say, the next six to eight months, just putting a purchase in, not necessarily buying it and spending the money right away, but at least putting a purchase in, by the time for, the new engine forty-one would come in, we would be, we would be almost thirty years old vehicle. So if you bounce back from the other slide to where we are now, we are definitely in the right, we're definitely spacing it out so that the next purchases aren't all on top of each other. But we're still trying to catch up to where we were trying to put ourselves in two thousand and eleven.
Are any questions on that timeline?
No, I got it. I have a question. Mayor, I have a question for, uh, Chief Barney. James, did we talk about, um, replacing engine thirty-nine with one of these other two engines at some point, or will that remain the spare?
Yeah, so I, I, I don't know what, um, Chief Costa or the, or the council's current plan is. But usually, usually as one gets purchased, it becomes a spare till the next one gets purchased and becomes a spare.
Okay.
And so on. If, if, if it's, if it's feasible, if the, if the vehicle is so far gone, then it can't be bought. Um, that's always, that's always on the, you know, the forefront of, of the mind while they're moving through the process. Okay, uh, we, we, we can go to the next slide. So current engine forty-one was built in nineteen ninety-seven by R.D. Murray, who is currently, currently no longer in business. Uh, they were bought out by another manufacturer. Um, it's a Spartan Gladiator cab and chassis. It's an all aluminum, uh, body, and it holds five hundred gallons of water. It is a fifteen-hundred gallon per minute, uh, pump. It also has the jaws of life on it. You can go to the next one, please. And then just, uh, this is just a projected timeline, um, of what our process seems to be, uh, based on the build of engine forty. Um, we actually started looking at apparatus as a, as a group from our company back in October, um, when we started to see the, the lead-out times on deliveries, uh, go over the full three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, it wasn't till, um, last month that we decided there was really only one manufacturer that we wanted to go with because they're the only ones that present an all stainless steel body from top to bottom. So we chose to go with Seagrave, who is, it kind of made the, the decision a lot easier for us because they're the only ones to offer it, so it, it's not really too much else to look at. Um, given the conditions here and the weather, nothing else really seems to be holding up in the northeast for, for the amount of time that we're keeping equipment.
Yeah.
Um, and if you, uh, you know, the rest of the timeline, obviously, I'm presenting tonight. Um, as a committee, we would, we would hope to have something to, to present to the board in, um, late August or September. Um, and then obviously from there, we would, we would hope that we could choose to move forward. And as I said, there, over five hundred and seventy-day lead-out time from a contract, if a contract was executed next month, it would be five hundred and seventy days before you saw that delivery. And, um, obviously, everything's just getting worse and worse just because of the backlog. So even if we approve, if you guys were to approve something in September, you wouldn't see it till March of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay. Uh, chief, I just want to, I, I, I don't remember. When I was with the Town of Mamarone, uh, we ordered a fire truck and, uh, they had to cancel the order. Uh, the fire truck was, the chassis was a skew. Uh, I, I just checked with the Town of Mamarone, just see, I, I don't remember which manufacturer it was.
It was, it was, uh, it was KME.
Okay, all right. All right, so you know about it.
We're, yeah, we're all aware of that. It drove down the street sideways.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Like a, like a, like a nineteen twenties movie.
Hmm.
Yeah, okay.
We have, we have a truck, we have a truck that drives down the street sideways, but it's supposed to.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure you knew about it. We didn't, you know,
Yeah.
fall into that same problem, the same manufacturer.
Yeah, we're aware.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you. And I think that's it. We, uh, so we put that together, just we wanted the board to, to be aware, um, that we are out there looking and we are out there, um, trying to obviously put together the best thing to protect the village. And, um, we wanted to make sure you're just aware of all of our steps so that no one was taken off guard if they were to hear about it from anyone else.
Thank you, chief. I really appreciate the heads up. Uh, this, this is obviously on your capital plan, right?
I believe so.
So, so mayor, the, the five-year, the five-year rotation is not, potentially not specified, but that's, uh, something that we've, um, followed, um, in the village for a while now. Based on that chart that Chief Barney was able to, to show.
Yeah, and, and I know, uh, there's, there's long lead times now because of COVID slowdowns and stuff like that. I, I, I'm sure fire engines, like everything else, uh, micro-processes and everything else, and I mean, it's, it's getting harder and harder to find, uh, parts and chips. Uh, so I, I, I understand that.
The question, a question I had of the fire department the other night was, um, if the city of New York puts in an order for a hundred fire trucks and we put in, the village of Mamarone puts in one order, why wouldn't they or do they get priority? And the way it was explained to me is they work on municipal fire trucks, then they'll work on a, on a, uh, a city fire truck. Every third truck that they're doing, they would work on the city fire truck. So everyone gets in line, just that the city has more spots in the line than municipal, um, municipal orders. So.
It, it makes sense, right? The city must be buying a hundred trucks a year.
Yeah, the city buys a lot and, and we don't get pushed aside because the city has a big order. And I thought that that was, uh, an interesting point that I didn't know. I, I didn't know. Ordering other trucks in the past, I didn't know that. So that's great.
Chief, is there anything else we need to know about this upfront?
Uh, not at this time. Obviously, once we put, uh, once we put together what we're, what we need to store our equipment and, um, to be comparable to what we currently have, we will, uh, come to you and present it. And you will, you will see the, uh, you will see the plan.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions or concerns, uh, for Chief Barney about this presentation? Okay, uh, chief, I just want to point out to, for the, uh, watching and listening public that, uh, Chief Barney, uh, is a longtime village employee and, uh, he has, uh, filled the role of, uh, acting DPW, uh, foreman, uh, since, uh, a longtime DPW foreman has been ill and, uh, he's gone above and beyond the call of duty and he's done an excellent job and we appreciate your efforts.
You're welcome and, and thank you for the acknowledgement. And thank you all for your time tonight.
Good night, chief.
Good night.
Bye.
All right. Pardon me. All right, uh, the next item up is, uh, communication to the board. And I, I just want to explain before we start communication to the board. Uh, there's a five limit, five-minute time limit on communication to the board. There's a communication to the board at the beginning of the meeting here, another one at the end of the meeting. Uh, if you're talking about a, a item on a new or old business, it's a three-minute time limit. If you're talking about the order of the bills, it's a five-minute time limit. And this is true whether you're an ex-mayor of the village of Mamarone, uh, my child or anybody, those, those are rules. Thank you. So please, please start with Mr. Tippett. I got it. I got it. Okay, sorry. Hi Glenn, unmute yourself, sir.
Good evening, uh, trustees. Uh, number one, was anything decided in an executive session that needs to be announced?
Had that been the case, I would have announced it.
Okay, because I did see, uh, directors', um, boatyard on there for their, uh, sorority. And, uh, I'd like to, you know, at one point, well, I'll wait, but we know, we know that that's going to be a large number. Uh, the Town of Mamarone had another sorority go through, um, last week, and that's going to cost us another nineteen thousand. Uh, good evening. I hope everybody is having a good day. Uh, good news on the COVID front. We're down to, uh, eleven hundred, uh, testing positive. We're under two percent.
There's a report?
Down to eighteen hundred in the hospital and we're down to three thirty-six in ICU. So over the last two weeks, we've really gone in the right direction and hopefully by April, May, it'll be behind us and you can see me in person.
I'm not involved with that.
Yeah.
Couple, couple, a couple of items, um, with the, uh, fire truck, not only it's five, five hundred and seventy days until they deliver it, but then usually we send it over to Excalibur and they add all the extra bells and whistles that the truck needs. So, you know, it might, it might be another thirty days before you can even put it into service. I'm glad that, uh, Jerry called up and, um, spoke to the fire department. I mentioned it at the last meeting. A lot of equipment has a lot of lead time. So hopefully, you know, all the heads of all the departments, uh, have discussed it with the village manager. And, you know, we can make sure that we're getting our equipment in a timely manner, uh, realizing that we have the new lead time. Uh,
Time is on?
We're just, we're just, the new budget, fortunately, I missed the beginning of it. Um, was there, uh, any discussion about where we sit with this year's budget? Because I, I see that you did make the, um, you are going to be making the adjustment for the police overtime. And there's a number of items that need to be adjusted on the budget that we know are going to be up. The sales tax is probably going to be up six to eight hundred thousand over what we expect it to be. But we have a, uh, the mortgage tax is probably up. The tenant's was up over a hundred thousand. There are some items that are up that are offset. We've collected a million dollars worth of insurance recovery. But unfortunately, most of that is a expense that came, I would assume eighty percent from, um, uh, from Ida. And, um,
He's not well, is he?
Yeah, so that would be an offset. And then we, we, uh, got a good amount of money from CHIP. And that would be for past capital projects. So that is gonna, that is going to be a cash through our budget. At some point, Augie is going to, uh, charge whatever the capital project is, and you're going to see the CHIP's money come in off on the other side as an expense. On the downside, we have, uh, metered parking, which is probably going to come in somewhere about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than we budgeted. We have Harbor Island Parking, which is about eighty thousand less than budgeted. We have the beach, which is fifty thousand dollars less than budgeted. We have the pavilion, which is about seventy thousand less than budgeted. We have finance forfeiture, which is going to be probably about a hundred thousand less than budgeted. Permits is coming in light. It could change, uh, future. So I, I will write up and send in those items. And then on the expense side, you have one major one, which is the, um, hospital station and health coverage, which is going to need a hundred and fifty thousand dollar judgment. It went up as a, uh, January, uh, first significantly. So with the payments that we have left, we have, um, April and May payment left.
Done.
Uh, we're going to need approximately eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars and we got seventy-three in the budget for.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay.
Have a good evening, my friend. I'm sure I'll speak to you later.
Thanks, Glenn.
Okay. Uh, there are no public hearings tonight.
Yeah.
Uh, order of the bills, item two A. Two A, first item is, uh, resolution authorizing budget amendment for parks work. So let me get this right. Uh, for years, we were tapped into the county line and using their water. And apparently the county found out and being the chiefscapes that they are, they're making us pay for our own water now?
That's one way to say it.
Okay, so the, and, and since we, we hadn't budgeted for that water, uh, we now have to budget because they're making us pay for it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And this is a transfer of five thousand from contingent to the parks utilities water. And this is for, uh, the area by the Fireman's Memorial and the gazebo. Is that correct, Jerry?
On the, on the, on the post road.
On the post road.
On the post road, yeah.
Right. Anybody on the board have any questions or concerns? So this is coming out of one pocket into another pocket.
You're a pro though.
All right, again, make motion. I'll second the motion. Augie, call the roll. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? Victor, may I hear you? Mayor Murphy?
Yes. Uh, the next up is a budget amendment for police reimbursement overtime. And it's moving, uh, from the revenue of public safety, a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, uh, to appropriations police overtime. So this is money that has come in from, uh, contractors, uh, with folks that don't know, uh, when you see Con Ed or, you know, some contractor digging up the road and there's a police officer there. Those contractors are paying for the police officer. So this is taking the money in. Uh, and then as we take the money, we have to transfer the money to the police overtime to make up the loss of revenue. Is that correct, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay. So this is, you know, any questions or concerns? Uh, I'd like a motion, please. So moved.
Second.
Okay, cool. Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
We can't hear you. Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Uh, Augustese connection must be on. Budget amendment, so, okay, this is taking, uh, thirty-seven thousand from the general fund balance and removing it to snow removal materials. And, uh, the, the reason for this is that salt has gone up by twenty-three dollars a ton, forty-six percent, uh, since we last looked at it. Is that correct, Jerry, in some substance?
It's gone up. Uh, the exact numbers, yeah, that's right. It's gone up. It's gone up. The exact numbers, yeah, that's right. It's gone up. The cost now is seventy-three dollars a ton. It used to be around fifty dollars a ton. That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. So this isn't, this isn't because we've had a particularly inclement winter?
No, this is the regular topping off of the existing supply that we maintain all the time in the shed.
Trustee Natchez, you want to say something?
That just was answered. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question. You know, Jerry, are, are we using as much salt as we used to, or are we using more brine now?
No, Lou, brine is not a replacement for salt. Brine gives us a couple of hours of response time.
Yeah.
And so brine is mixed for us at the town of Maranick. We go pick it up and apply it. The, the, the amount of salt used in a brine solution is twenty-three percent, you know, of a, of a gallon. So it really isn't that much at all. It's somewhat insignificant. The, the fact is that our, our, our crew is putting down brine on a regular basis this year as opposed to other years because we're just having more ice storms. And we're trying to give ourselves a little bit more time to come in late in night or early in the morning and kind of prepare a little bit, but.
But brine doesn't just place salt in anywhere.
Yeah, the cost of salt going up twenty-three dollars is a huge jump. We used to pay, we used to pay these numbers, these, these amounts four or five years ago, at least from, from when I was in Jersey.
Okay, thank you, Jer. I need a motion.
So moved. We're second.
Okay, Nora made the motion. Trustee Young, second. Call the roll, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next up is the abstract of voted vouchers, nine hundred and nine thousand five hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents. Somebody have any questions or concerns? Glenn, go ahead.
Am I still on?
Yes.
The, the one I was going to ask about is we have fire equipment twenty-twenty-one. Is, is that the end of the fire equipment being ordered that we got the bond from the storm authority for? It'd be all, all the way on the bottom under, under capital.
Do you have the page number? Let me make it easier first.
Mr. Mayor, I can answer that question. We're still we're still ordering stuff there. Like with many things, there are delays in the supply chain of any of these orders. So we haven't ordered everything that we are scheduled to order. And we have until, I believe, May of twenty-twenty-three to spend the entire two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was, we received as that part of that grant that Assemblyman Otis helped us secure.
Yeah, good. So that's, that's basically all going to be paid for by, by that bond. It's just slow with the equipment. Okay, thank you.
Yep, that's.
Hi, Glenn. Anybody on the board? No? Okay, I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, great. There is no old business. The next up, a resolution, execution of agreement. And this is new business item for a resolution, execution of agreement with Southeast Consortium. What this is, is all the towns from Portchester, towns and villages from Portchester to Pelham have banded together and they have formed a consortium to give recreational services to folks with special needs. It would be very prohibitively expensive for one community, especially some of these small communities like us, to do it. But we band together and do it, and actually they, they provide great service to the folks who use this service. I've heard nothing but good things out of, about them. For us, it's very convenient because they're headquartered in the town of Maranick Village. And they use, a lot of times, they will use the pavilion to have programs for folks. So it works out very good for us. It's cost effective. We've been doing this for forty years. That is that program, and we are just renewing our, our participation in it. So I would gladly make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, Nora. Can we please call the roll?
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Thank you. You're welcome. The next up is resolution appointment of bond counsel. Now, what this is, was we have a bond counsel and the gentleman who is our bond counsel was a sole practitioner. That gentleman has now become a member of a firm. So it's the same contract, the same terms, but it is just moving his, where we, where we send the check to, to Harris, Harris Beach LLC. Instead of where we used to send it to is, is Mr. Jeff Storch. Mr. Storch has joined Harris Beach. So there's no impact to the taxpayers. It's just a change of address on a check. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Augie, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Ford Escape, resolution authorizing purchase of a Ford Escape SE. And I will ask my friend, Mr. Sona, if you give a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're looking to replace a vehicle. Twenty-fourteen Ford Focus, which has had been plagued by transmission issues. The plan is to turn down the twenty-fifteen Chevy Equinox, which is assigned to me, to the building department. And this will replace that vehicle. And the quote is off Washington County contract. And there's no, in the memo, I did actually secure a second quote from another contract we can participate in. And the Washington County, County contract is cheaper by several hundred dollars.
Okay. Any questions or concerns from board members? I'd like a motion.
So moved.
I have a second. Thank you, Nora. Please call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yeah, yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next item, resolution authorizing contract with Zonicity, we are holding off. Resolution authorizing funding of upgrade to pay stations. These are the pay stations for parking. We talked about this in work session. Jerry, you want to give a brief update of why, why we need to do this?
Sure, Mayor. Existing now, we have fifteen multi-space meter pay stations throughout the village. This would upgrade the components and the mechanisms, bringing them up to date. Including, and I forgot to mention this in the, in the work session discussion. But the three G issue has come up where three G is now no longer available from certain carriers. So this upgrades the, the guts of the, of the pay stations and brings them up to date so that we no longer experience, for the most part, missed fees, parking fees, because the pay stations go down so frequently in the during the year, especially in the summertime when we're at peak. So that's what this does. This comes out of a fund. We have two hundred plus thousand dollars in net fund, two hundred and forty-something thousand dollars.
Great. Thank you. Good use of the fund. Mr. Tippett has a question.
Yeah, the Parking Authority Fund, I actually hadn't really heard about it before. How, how, how is it funded?
I, I, I think, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong. When businesses open and they don't have the ability to provide the requisite parking for the business, the zoning board or playing, but I forget which, will assess them a fee. And they pay that fee into this fund.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome, Glenn. Okay, that being said and explained, anybody on the board of any questions or concerns? Okay, I will make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Now, the next item on the agenda is not on the agenda. We, I want to add an item to the agenda. And the adding item would be about appointing a resident to the Marine Education Committee. So I, I need a motion to add an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Nora first, Dan second. Augie, call the roll for that.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The person we are adding is a, a resident named Elizabeth Selden. She seems very eager and has a lot of experience in education, so it, it would probably be a very nice fit. So I will make the motion to appoint Ms. Selden to Marine Education Advisory Committee.
Second. Please call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I want to thank trustee to four for bringing this to the forefront and for trying to get that committee back on its feet. And I vote yes. All right, communications to the board round two. And guess who's Glenn?
Hey.
Hey Glenn, how are you doing?
You were discussing at the, during the work session about the conditions of the rivers and everything. We just, we used to have the environmental cleanup days, and unfortunately COVID kind of got, got that canceled. And, you know, just, you know, so all, all the new trustees know. That would be a good one to bring back. And what would happen is we would have all different volunteer groups come and clean the beach and all the different rivers in the, in the village. And then what the village would do is they would have staff help with equipment. Actually, you know, go into where it's, you know, some, some of the people couldn't go, supply all kinds of garbage bags and support staff. And they would have a Saturday where virtually they'd go through and clean up all the rivers and streams. Unfortunately, because of COVID, it's been canceled for the last couple of years, but perhaps this spring that could be brought back.
I, I think we did it last year, Glenn.
And it's been rescheduled. We were on the, at Departmental Committee talking about it last week. So it's been scheduled. I, I can't give you the date off the top of my head.
But we did do it last year.
Yeah, and that, that, that usually is a, a great day where they really get, you know, all the garbage and everything out of the rivers. Finally, you know, everybody, it, it's been a long couple of years. You know, it's been exhausting, it's been exhausting. You guys have done a great job. It says, I, I know I, I stay on top of you on a lot of subjects and everything, you know? But you know what? I, I don't challenge the stupid. I challenge those who have high intelligence. And I expect, you know, that, you know, they can give me the answers that I'm looking for. And everyone has come through time after time. And, you know, sometimes I can be long-winded like now, but I do thank you for your patience. And thank, and, and, and thank you, you know, we are probably more transparent right now. Augie has done fantastic work. We are more transparent as a village, a village right now than we ever have been in the history of this village. And you are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. It's first you to say. And I, and I agree with you.
Mayor?
Especially about our staff.
Mayor, I have something for Glenn.
Glenn?
For Glenn, I think.
For Glenn.
Okay.
Glenn, earlier this evening, I sent the board an email asking for anyone's relevant historical knowledge of a crossing in front of Walters Hot Dogs. Do you remember one?
I do.
Yeah, there, there was always, there was always a, a school crossing in front of Walters. Usually right where that, right where the, the telephone pole was.
Yes.
Going diagonally across.
I can add to that, Jerry. I think the crossing was, was painted after there was a incident where a child was hit and killed by a car.
You're exactly right. Does anyone recall ADA ramps at that location? Because that's the requirement now. Maybe not. They probably weren't.
No, not back then.
No.
Okay.
No, but, but, but you can put, there is a driveway that's not used, it is now blocked off, except for emergencies. That on the Walters side, and I believe, so you would only have to cut one side on the school.
So the, the specs for ADA ramps are somewhat detailed right now. That would be a good idea, but that could be a location where we, where we do that. So I appreciate that. But I will, I will discuss this with the county since Palmer, you know, runs a bus.
And, and Jerry, the question about Walters, was that profiling in any way, shape, or form?
No, no, no. I just, you and I, you and I had a conversation at that location about the signs.
No, no, Jerry, I was only kidding you. I was only kidding.
I know you're kidding me.
Yeah, you know, when I go to Walters and they say, how long have you been going to Walters? I put my hands like I'm clapping, and I go, the first time I went to Walters, I was this wide.
Jerry, I, I can give you more background on that when we're offline.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Jerry, I have something for you, a quick, quick question. Can you give us, can you send us a timeline on, on the implementation of Zonicity? And we still haven't gotten it.
Okay, sorry about that. I may have that in my email. I'll look for that right now.
Okay.
Okay. Report from the village manager.
Mayor, the only thing that I have to report is earlier today, the building inspector and I met with Gerandy Martinez, the executive director of the Community Resource Center and Mr. Len Aubrey. And we looked at what will be the next phase of the CRC. And it's extremely encouraging. A lot of what they're doing will be expanded to continue their good work. And the renovations due to the Hurricane Ida will be extensive, especially since they're trying to, for lack of a better term, almost floodproof the basement at the CRC. But with West Cop moving out of there and the ability for them to expand in that facility for more offices, more worker development, more areas where they can serve their clients. The price tag is, is up there pretty good. So it's a very worthwhile cause and an extremely beneficial nonprofit in our community. And I just wanted to give them a plug and wish them the best as they rebuild that, that facility. They've got a lot of work to do.
I agree with you wholeheartedly. They're, they're our partner in many, many ways.
Yep, they are. Other than that, I have two items to file for the record. One is the supplemental agreement for Hillside Avenue Bridge with DOT. And the other is the agreement for the work, the design work for Halsted Avenue roadway restoration.
Great, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk Treasurer?
Yes, Mayor. We have residential and non-residential railroad parking permits expiring on February twenty-eighth. The sale for new permits will start March first tomorrow. We've asked the police department to give a two-week grace period for people to come and buy them. The second item is that we have a tackling sale on Wednesday, March night at ten AM in the courtroom. You can pay taxes until four-thirty PM on Tuesday, March eighth. Uh, you can pay taxes until four thirty PM on Tuesday, March eighth.
The last item is. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Look it through.
No. We have a notice of defect um from a resident on the east side of Jefferson Avenue near the car wash. There has been a gurgling of water coming up through the sidewalk that appears to be active twenty-four seven for at least the past month.
This was noted for directed. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Village Attorney?
Uh, just to report, Mayor, that local law two of twenty twenty-two, which dealt with residency requirements, was filed with the Secretary of State and became effective on February third of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much, Bob. Uh, minutes of commissions, boards of committees, uh, minutes of the board of trustees, work session and regular meeting of February fourteenth twenty twenty, minutes of the flood advisory committee on December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one, minutes of the committee for the environment meeting of January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, minutes of the Board of Traffic Commissioners meeting on December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, before I adjourn tonight, I just want to uh point out that there is a a very tragic uh event happening in the world in the Ukraine. Uh, the true, most people know that the Ukrainian state was attacked by Russia. Uh, the folks in Ukraine are uh really teaching us, you know, what the value of freedom is, and they're teaching us about bravery and sacrifice and patriotism. You know, every morning I get up and I look at my news feed, and I see that Kiev is still uh in Ukrainian hands. And I know that it gives me hope that there are people in this world that are willing to fight and willing to die and willing to sacrifice for their freedom, and their fight is our fight. And I think, you know, we we've we've had too many people screaming about uh taking their freedom away because they have to wear a piece of cloth on their face. And we have people who are really uh fighting uh to maintain democracy. And uh I wish them all the luck in the world, and I'm glad that we are doing everything in our power, short of sending troops uh to help them. Uh, God bless them all, and I I hope that they uh they survive what they have to go through. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.